Alright guys, we're gonna go ahead and get started here. I want to welcome you all to the regularly scheduled council meeting of the governing body of Spring Hill, Kansas on Thursday, October 10th, 2024. You guys could stand with me. We have Kendra Miller with Resurrection Church, Spring Hill, here. That's gonna do the invocation.
Dear God, we gather here today with grateful hearts, seeking your guidance and wisdom as we make decisions that affect our community. Help us to listen to one another, respect diverse opinions, and work collaboratively for the common good. May our discussions be filled with understanding and our actions reflect our commitment to service. Grant us the courage to address challenges and the vision to create a brighter future for all. In Jesus' name, amen.
Amen. Please remain standing for a sledge.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam Clerk, if you could please take the roll.
Mr. Young, Mr. Peel.
Here.
Mr. Van Houten.
Here.
Mrs. Feback.
Here.
Mayor, we have a quorum present.
Thank you very much. Next, we'll move on to the approval of the agenda, and we did have a request to remove Executive Session Number Two. But are there any other questions or comments on that? If not, I entertain a motion to approve the agenda as amended.
So moved.
Second.
Got a motion in the second. Is there any further discussion? If not, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries three zero zero. Next, we'll move on to formal council action. The first item on the agenda is to consider appointment of a city council member. This person that I am suggesting for appointment today is someone that's involved in the community, been involved in lots of different ways. They've been, were a part of the Chamber Ambassador Program. They've been volunteered at the Food Pantry, Food for the Hungry. They also went down to Hurricane Katrina back when that happened. Lots of other different things throughout the community. They own their business, have a lot of experience in their previous work before owning their own business. They were able to install lean manufacturing at the business, which saves the company a lot of money and ups production a lot. So with that, my person for nomination today, his name is Michael Grant. And if you guys have any questions or comments, if not, go from there.
I had a chance to talk to Mr. Grant earlier this week, I think Monday, had a really good conversation with him. I think he's gonna be a good addition. Checked all the boxes for me, so I'm excited to get a, get a full board again.
I as well talked to Mr. Grant, and I think he'd be a great addition to our council and...
So I spoke with him as well. I think he's certainly checks the boxes. Like they said, I don't see any red flags. Had the opportunity to talk to Council President Young. He's a hard no for no personal reasons, just his own, his own, his own reasons, which I share some concerns of. But my perspective's different. The mayor is the person to select the appointee, and then it's our responsibility to vet them, and I don't see any red flags, so.
Alright, with that, I entertain a motion.
Actually, I think I just need a vote, Mayor.
We're gonna go ahead and do a...
You wanna do a motion?
Yeah, we'll go ahead.
Okay.
I mean, just candidly, there's nothing, there's no motion, because it's not a, nothing to move for. You just, let's just, I think we should do a roll call vote. That's, we can start on either side, whoever wants to go first.
We're just doing what we've done in the past.
Yeah, I know, yeah, after we got done with the last one, I realized there was nothing to move for or second, so. We have nomination and a vote.
Will you do a roll call?
Yep.
Okay.
Mr. Van Houten?
Yes.
Mrs. Feback?
Yes.
Mr. Peel?
Yes.
Mayor, the, or the roll call vote is three zero zero.
Awesome. Well, welcome to team, Michael. I believe he's here tonight. If you wanted to say anything, feel free to step up, and she can go ahead and swear you in right now if you're able. And you don't have to say anything if you don't want to.
I don't have anything to say. I'm just kinda excited for the opportunity, and it'll be definitely a proud pleasure. Should be all fun.
Awesome. Well, she'll swear you in, then you can go ahead and join us up here. I know it's just kinda throwing you in there, but...
Okay, I'm gonna just kinda stand right over here. Raise your right hand, please. I state your name. Do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Kansas.
And the Constitution of the State of Kansas.
And faithfully discharge.
And faithfully discharge.
The duties of city council member. For the city of Spring Hill, Kansas.
For the city of Spring Hill, Kansas.
So help me God. Congratulations.
Thank you.
I'm signing right there. Great, thank you. And then I think you can probably take your seat right over there.
Alright, next, we'll move on to citizen participation. This is a time when people from the public can come in and speak about whatever they would like to talk about. We did have a couple people sign up, but if you're in the room and you didn't sign up and you would like to speak, you'll get your chance. First person on the list is Logan Moore.
Hello, my name is Logan Moore. I live at 606 West Smith Street here in Spring Hill, Kansas, and I hope you guys aren't tired of seeing me yet. I wanted to, once again, talk to you about the relaunch of our church, formerly known as Oak Tree Baptist Church, now as Generation Church. We are located at two zero six eight zero West 199th Street, or if you are directionally challenged like I am, we're across the street from the Quick Trip. And so, we are relaunching this Sunday, and so after nine months of effort in trying to reformulate our mission's philosophy, our running philosophy, and pretty much just about everything at the church except for the people and the facilities, it's finally here. And so, I did want to invite everyone to that. It's gonna be at 11 o'clock this Sunday at the aforementioned address. We'll have some preaching, we'll have some coffee, we'll have some bounce houses for kids, a couple of guard games, and some food trucks and stuff that will be there. The last few times that I've been in here, I have given a little bit of details as what has actually changed. We started with kind of our outreach focus on how we've really weren't in the community at all. We felt like if we had closed, that no one in the community would truly care except for those present in the facilities. We've changed to try to do things just because, or because it's just, not because we're trying to get people in the door. We want to be the body of Christ into the community, and that means serving the community and helping the community in any way we can. Secondly, we kinda followed up and talked about how we had changed our services. Kind of in line with our name, we are trying to be multi-generational. And so, we have young kids singing up on the praise team. We have people that are standing up from anywhere from about five or six up to, I think it was eighty-four, eighty-five, that are talking in front. And so, there, we're not just one of those churches that you show up, you sit down, and you shut up. We want people to participate. We want people to be engaged. You can't worship the Lord if you're not engaged. And so, we've tried to make some strides in order to make our services multi-generational. And then today, the last thing that I'd really like to just bring forth is kind of our discipleship philosophy. And if you will, I just would like to read a single verse from the scriptures, which is which we base all of our discipleship based on. And so, in 2 Peter, Chapter One, Verse Number Five, it says, "And beside this giving all diligence, add to your faith virtue and virtue knowledge." We joke at our house that the first word that all of three of our kids learned was the word "no." Truthfully, that's not accurate. The first word all of our kids seem to have spread out was "mom," much to my dismay. And I think that a lot of churches, when it comes to discipleship, when it comes to focusing and raising up the next generation of believers, the first words they try to teach them is "no." You get a list of do's and don'ts, things that you can do, things that you can't do. You have to dress this way, you can't dress that way, you can't accept these people, you have to wear your hair this way. The truth of the matter is, even in our own lives, the first words we learn are who our parents are. And I think that the list of do's and don'ts will come naturally, but ultimately, it's based upon our relationship with God. And so, within our discipleship program, what we first aim to do is introduce people to who God is as our Father, a loving, kind Father who wants to give and do things for us. We try to do this relationally, not through a program, not through an education manifesto. We just wanna say, hey, listen, we have gone through these steps, we have grown in our relationship with Christ, and we'd like to help walk you through that as well. And we take that all the way from a base level where if you're just saved, introducing you to who the Savior is, all the way to if you would like to eventually get into ministry, if you wanted to be a pastor, if you wanted to be a youth pastor, or things along those lines. But we have added all of that into what we consider discipleship there at the church. And so, we're really trying to put a step forward. Just wanted, again, invite everybody to come and check us out, see what's going on on the 13th. If not, then we hope to see you in the community as we're out serving you. So, thank you.
Thank you. Next on the list is Bill Peterman.
Bill Peterman, 19431 West 200th Street. It's been two weeks since the last meeting, and I wasn't allowed to talk after the citizens' participation deal. So, I mean, I had to wait two weeks to give my opinion. But the planning commission made a decision based on facts and voted unanimously "no," and we all know what I'm talking about. And it was considered, it was because it was not consistent with all the other plans that they've done. They checked the golden rules, checked all that, and it, they had reasons. They gave you the reason why they voted "no." Now, when I came in here, the city council, all they could say is, "They got it wrong. They got it wrong." What did they get wrong? They got it wrong, but don't give me what they got wrong. Why was it important for you guys to say yes? The other question on here would be, I just don't understand, the only thing that I heard that meant, made sense was, "I put most of them guys on that board." Well, they've, most of them guys have been around a long time before any of you guys was even in here. So, I, I, I found that hard to believe. Now, this is only my opinion, so I'm just saying, I think it's one of them things that needs to be either reconsidered or thought about a little bit so it doesn't happen again. One of the city councilmen had great questions for the architect, didn't get very good answers either. He kinda hem-hawed around as far as I was concerned. I, I don't wanna be one of them guys that six years from now I can say, "I told you so," but maybe so. The other thing I want you guys to think about is, the city administrator is not your boss. You are his boss. You have the right to fire him. He does not have the right to fire you. So you guys think about that too. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? If not, we'll go ahead and close citizen participation at this time and move on to the consent agenda. These are items that the staff considers to be routine maintenance, but if there are any questions or comments on that, now would be the time. If not, I entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
So moved.
Second.
Got a motion in the second. Is there any further discussion? If not, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries four zero zero. Next, we'll move on to formal council action. First item on the agenda is consider approval of ordinance number 2024-13 authorizing the annexation of land along US Highway 169 in Burlington Northern Santa Fe Railroad Right-of-Way. And Mrs. Abel, you have the floor.
Thank you very much. The next item before you is a request to consider an ordinance authorizing the annexation of areas along 169 and BNSF Railroad. In an effort to clean up the city's boundary and reduce some of the confusion on what's in Spring Hill and what's not, the city engaged Lambrey Neerson to assist with creating a legal description to clean up some of these areas. The areas are right-of-way that's owned by Johnson County, BNSF, or KDOT. So these are already existing right-of-way areas. We're just taking over the ownership of those areas. It's our way of squaring up the city's boundaries and bringing everything into the city limits. So this property annexation act, action is something that is supported by all the parties, KDOT, BNSF, the city, and Johnson County. So this is a relatively easy approval. With that, staff recommends the approval of an ordinance authorizing the annexation of land along US Highway 169 and the BNSF right-of-way. I am available if you have any questions.
Questions or comments on that one?
Yeah. The, the picture that's in here, or the drawing, is it everything that's within that bound, those boundaries? Is that, okay?
Yes.
Is there, is there a business that's within that boundary?
Minus that exception area.
Okay. Okay, that, that was what I was checking on. So there's...
There's an exception that's listed.
It's all, and it's all just right-of-way? Okay.
Any other questions or comments? I'm gonna give just a second longer. There's a couple people still looking for the map in here, so. You're close, you're close.
Oh, so the, okay, area of exception.
Yeah.
I totally missed that. Alright, that's my bad. That was a dumb question.
Very good question.
Come on, Brian.
You gotta keep me on my toes.
Any other questions or comments? If not, I entertain a motion.
I move to approve ordinance number 2024-13 authorizing the annexation of land along Highway, US Highway 169 in Burlington Northern Santa Fe Railroad Right-of-Way.
I second.
Got a motion in the second. Is there any further discussion? If not, Madam Clerk, could you please take the roll?
Mr. Peel?
Yes.
Mr. Grant? Did you say yes? Thank you. Mr. Van Houten?
Yes.
Mrs. Feback?
Yes.
Mayor Burkey?
Yes.
Mayor, ordinance 2024-13 passes fours, or five zero zero.
Alright, thank you very much. Next item on the agenda is consider approval of the On-Call Engineering Professional Services Agreement with Call Valley for the construction materials testing, and Mrs. Abel, you still have the floor.
I still have the floor. The next item before you is a request to approve an on-call engineering services agreement with Call Valley Engineering, and this is for construction materials testing on many of our projects. Call Valley Engineering has previously provided the service of construction materials testing of our asphalt, concrete, many of the products that are installed for our streets, storm sewer, curb, gutter, sidewalks and such. So as we're building the public improvements, we wanna make sure those materials are to the specification. So in order to do that, they collect a sample, take it back to the lab, and test it. The contract had previously been with Lambrey Neerson, and they would hire sub consultants to assist with that work. Well, now that I am here and we have city engineering staff, we wanna have a direct contractual relationship with many of these vendors like Call Valley. So we wanna bring that in-house so that we have control over when we order the construction materials testing to occur. We get the reports directly. We have a little bit more control over that. So the engineering department is going to be issuing an RFQ next week for a massive engineering services and architectural services on-call so that we can get about a dozen specialists in the various engineering and architectural realms. So in order to do that, we have to take it out for RFQ. It's gonna take time to review. We anticipate having those contracts before you in December or maybe January, depending on how long, how many proposals we get and how long it takes to review those. So we're anticipating having that in front of you during the December meeting. So to fill that gap, we wanted to bring Call Valley in, bring them in as an on-call, but we wanted to extend the term of that agreement to December to coincide with the new contracts that we anticipate having in December. So this is just a, a way to fill that gap. So with that, staff recommends approval of the On-Call Professional Services Agreement with Call Valley Engineering for construction materials testing. I'm available if you have any questions.
So I have a question really quick, and I know it's gonna be, maybe it can be better answered upon getting the contracts, just to see if there's a price difference, because when we went through Lambrey Neerson, and then they subbed it out generally.
Price.
Yeah, I was gonna say they might have increased it a little bit, but now we're going directly to the services, so.
Yes, so...
Pricing decreased a little bit.
I'm not sure about that, because after I had presented that to the Lambrey Neerson item a few weeks ago, I did get verification that although their contract says they have the ability to tack on an additional twenty percent for all their sub consultants, they've actually not done that in the past. So this is a net zero effect. The only advantage that I can see is we have control over when we contact them, who we contact, maybe get faster service instead of having to go through a third party like Lambrey Neerson, and then we get the reports directly, so. So, having that direct relationship, I feel, is a benefit to this contractual relationship.
I agree. I was just curious if there would be a cost savings.
Even though their contract said they could, they never did.
Yeah. Okay, thank you.
Yeah, anytime you can go directly to either a manufacturer or somebody that provides services, it's definitely, definitely a benefit for sure. Any other questions or comments? If not, I entertain a motion.
I move to, I move to approve the on-call engineering professional services agreement. Call Valley Engineering authorized the mayor and staff to execute the agreement.
Second. Got a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? If not, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries four zero zero. Next item on the agenda is consider acceptance of bid for Safe Streets for All or SS4A Comprehensive Safety Action Plan and authorize the mayor to execute the agreement. Mrs. Abel, you are still on the floor.
I'm still here. Okay, the next one. This is the last one, I promise. The next item before you is a request to approve a professional services agreement for the completion of our SS4A Comprehensive Safety Action Plan. The city applied for SS4A funding through the federal government to complete the comprehensive safety action plan. This is the first step for us to provide a framework, so that we can utilize this on future projects to improve the safety of our roadways and many of our pedestrian routes. So, once we have this in place, this will help us to get additional funding, so that we can target some of these areas directly. The city received two hundred thousand dollars with a promise of a local match for this federal grant. The city then applied to the state of Kansas for additional funding to help with that local match. So, all in, we're gonna get two hundred and fifty thousand dollars worth of project, and our, our contribution is a whopping twelve thousand five hundred dollars. So, kudos to all those grant writers out there that helped us out. We're getting a lot for very little money. The city released a request for qualifications for consulting firms to assist with the efforts to create this action plan, to identify and prioritize safety strategies and projects throughout the city to help us improve the roadway safety, emergency response, and enforcement improvement throughout our streets and sidewalks. The RFQ was released in September. On October third, we really, we received responses from three consulting firms, and a selection committee comprised of city staff reviewed those proposals and scored them based on the criteria that was included in the RFQ documents. Based on that review, da-da-da-da-da, we intentionally didn't put it in the agenda, because we didn't know until two days ago who it was. So, it is going to be HDR. They are the consulting firm that has a wealth of experience in creating plans just like this for cities just like ours. So, that was one of their main selling points. The other thing was, they had a pretty comprehensive action plan outlined in their proposal. So, it was basically a step-by-step procedure that they provided to us, and just the level of detail that they provided was overwhelming for me, but it was very impressive as well. The project manager, Jay Aber, he has become the leading expert in our region for projects just like this. So, having Jay at the helm and the expertise of HDR, I think, is really gonna help our, our projects and, you know, our ability to secure future funding for SS4A. So, with that, staff recommends the acceptance of the bid and the approval of the professional services agreement with HDR for the SS4A Comprehensive Safety Action Plan. I am available if you have any questions.
I have any questions, just really a comment. This is just something, kind of one of the early steps and some exciting things. We've really been trying to focus on trails and sidewalks and some things like that, after we knocked out a bunch of the road stuff. And so, this is one of the early steps in doing that. So, I'm excited for this, excited to get the grant money, and that's something that we always try to pursue. And we've had pretty good, good luck here the last year or two in getting some grants. So, we'll definitely keep, keep going down that road, so.
Yeah, there is a pretty tight timeframe to get this report done. We want to have it completed by May of next year, and that's why we wanted to fast-track this with the RFQ and getting this in front of you, instead of waiting an additional two weeks to put it into the packet without the blank. So, anyway, thank you for allowing us to help fast-track this, so that we can meet that May deadline.
Any other questions or comments?
My only comment is, again, tip of the hat to leadership and to staff who's pushing these grants. These are what we would need more of, and so, job well done. This is, this is slam dunk for our investment of like twelve thousand five hundred dollars.
Yeah.
Yeah, so, well done.
All right, if there are no other questions or comments, I entertain a motion.
A motion to approve acceptance of the bid and approval of the professional services agreement with HDR and authorize the mayor and staff to execute the agreement.
A second.
Got a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? If not, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries four zero zero. Thank you very much. Next item on the agenda, consider approval of ordinance number twenty twenty-four dash fourteen, amending chapter one, article nine of the Spring Hill Municipal Code relating to the meetings of the park advisory board. And Mr. Spear, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening. So, this item, the city code requires or specifies that the park advisory board currently says that the board shall meet monthly. And going through the meetings, the board has found that, you know, oftentimes, there's just not that much business before the board. The meetings are short, and so, the thought was, giving them the ability to meet less, less often would just make those meetings more efficient. But, you know, doing so requires an ordinance change to, to change the code. So, what we are proposing, the board would like to meet every other month. The way we have it written in there, though, just says that they will meet at least six times per year. Again, that gives them a little more flexibility. You know, for whatever reason, they needed to meet back-to-back months and took three months off, and we'd still be within that, within that timeline. So, that's it. Pretty simple procedural change to let them meet a little less frequently. Happy to answer any questions you have.
I don't have a problem with it. I think it's, like you say, sometimes it's hard to, you know, in the summer, spring, or something, they might have more things to do, or in winter time, other times, you know, there might not be a lot going on with parks. So, it might be difficult to come with, up with enough subjects and topics for an agenda, so I don't have a problem with it.
They can always do specials too. They need to, so.
Yeah, I like the wording, allowing them to do, you know, as long as they're doing at least that many, they can, you know, do ten if they want to.
Sure. Yeah.
Any other questions or comments? If not, I entertain a motion.
Move to approve ordinance number twenty twenty-four dash fourteen, amending chapter one, article nine of the Spring Hill Municipal Code relating to meetings of the park advisory board.
Second. Got a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? If not, Madam Clerk, could you please take the roll?
Mr. Van Houten?
Yes.
Mrs. Feeback?
Yes.
Mr. Peel?
Yes.
Mr. Grant?
Yes.
Mayor Berkey?
Yes.
Ordinance twenty twenty-four dash fourteen passes to five zero zero.
Thank you very much. That ends formal council action at this time. We'll move on to a discussion item. The first item on the agenda is fireworks discharge dates. And Mr. Massey, you have the floor, and then also Mrs. Feeback, if you would like as well.
May I refer to, uh, Councilman Feeback?
Okay. Well, I'll just start out by saying, I did receive a couple emails this year prior to the Fourth of July, just about some concerned citizens that the number of days in which fireworks are able to be fired is too many. And so, anyway, I have one citizen that would like to remain anonymous and sent me something to read to everybody. So, is that okay? Okay, I just wanna make sure I didn't get prior approval here. So, I'm gonna go ahead and read this, kind of summarize a little bit, and then, is that okay? Then I'll open it up to everybody else. "As a citizen of Spring Hill, I am requesting that the city council respectfully consider a change from our current firework policy of eight days to three days. I appreciate the city council members listening to my concerns. Please consider the following. First is with seniors in our community, they state that the noise keeps them up until at least midnight for eight days, when fireworks typically stop. There's a worry for their homes. They wake up each morning with debris on their lawn, deck, and roof. It sounds like a war zone is a common statement, and working adults have difficulty with limited sleep due to the noise. Number two, individuals with disabilities struggle with loud noises. The inability to process sensory input can be physically and painfully and difficult to cope, resulting in a change in behaviors. The impact includes a change in sleep patterns, disruption of daily routines, and the need for noise counseling headphones. Several days of noise is upsetting when your home in your neighborhood is expected to be a safe and calm environment. Number three, our pets, who are like family to us, are fearful. Many of us endure cost for appointments, for medications. However, the meds make our pets sleepy, but they are still fearful. Our pets shake, hide, run off, and must, or excuse me, and refuse to go outside. A veterinarian in Lewisburg expressed the Fourth of July is devastating for animals. Many pets run away, and large farm animals, horses, are also impacted negatively. They were very pleased when the ban was implemented in Lewisburg. Number four, surrounding cities do not allow fireworks. Gardener has seen an example of providing three days of fireworks. However, the majority of our surrounding communities in Johnson County and Miami County have a ban on fireworks in the city limits." Okay. Number five, mostly it is documented that our veterans are impacted due to PTSD. Men and women who have served our country to protect our freedom have difficulty coping. What may seem like a patriotic act to shoot fireworks causes unbearable stress and anxiety. Drone shows have been replacing noisy firework displays for vets. It was brought to my attention that in the past, a group of citizens signed a petition to either ban or reduce the number of days for fireworks in Spring Hill, which led to a dead end due to lack of follow-through. The point is that my concern has been noted prior to this inquiry. Comments on the city of Spring Hill Facebook page, such as posted on June twenty-six regarding fireworks, had thirty-two comments, all discussing the excessiveness of the current policy and difficulties getting a response to fireworks lasting after eleven PM from law enforcement. Community members have concerns that the money made by the city of Spring Hill to have firework stands at least six this year drives the decision for increased days. Permits and fees have potential to bring money to the city. After reading an article from the Emporia Gazette, it seems as though this is correct. So far, the city of Emporia has collected over thirty thousand in profits from firework stands this year and sold three more permits than last year. And it was, this was an article in July of two thousand twenty-four. To the members, okay, I'm gonna conclude here. "To the members of the city council committee, I urge you to consider the immense impact that eight days of fireworks have on our community. While we understand the joy and celebration fireworks bring, the extended duration creates unnecessary hardship. Families with young children, veterans, pets, and individuals with sensory sensitivities all bear the brunt of prolonged disruptions to their well-being and sense of safety. By reducing the allowance to three days, we can strike a balance between tradition and responsibility, celebrating our city's spirit while respecting the health and peace of everyone. It's a small but meaningful change that addresses the concerns of many without diminishing the joy of fireworks displays. Please take a step toward a more inclusive, considerate, considerate policy that benefits the entire community. Thank you for your time and thoughtful consideration of this proposal." So. Go ahead.
I can, I can.
And then I have a couple comments to do. I wanted to wait until after.
I'll just say, I very much sympathize with everything they're saying there, but I'm also a person of freedom. I think something that I hear from, and I did get a few emails this year, I believe it was three, but don't quote me on that. But it was not, not a lot, but did get a few emails from citizens around July fourth about the fireworks. But I also, at the same time, had probably over a hundred people come and tell me how, how they love coming to Spring Hill because of all the fireworks and because being able to do it. They love coming around that week, because they can not pay to go to a firework show somewhere or something and just come here. They can sit out on their back porch, drink a drink, and watch the firework show from all their neighbors. I know my family enjoys it. I know lots of kids enjoy it. Definitely sympathize with some of the things that, that she said, and those, those sentiments were echoed in the several emails that I did receive. I don't have a problem with meeting somewhere in the middle. I feel like three days is not nearly enough. But I also think eight, eight days is probably maybe a little excessive. So, I think if we met in the middle somewhere, five or six days, I think that would be more in line with, with what I would seem appropriate. But I'll let you guys share what you think.
I think it, the, the shooting dates changes year to year.
Yep.
And some of the old philosophy, or previous philosophy from council in the past, had been to try and hit the, they wanted to hit a full weekend and also the fourth and the fifth. And however, the calendar fell, just year to year, played a lot into how they made that decision.
And that was part of the reason why we had, excuse me, more this last year, is just how it fell on the calendar. It made sense to include those days, or at least made sense to me, maybe not.
Because I would agree that eight days is probably too many. So, I'm definitely in agreement with that. I also know that eight days was selected based on that philosophy.
Yeah, what was the year before? Was it six, or five? Five or six, I think.
I would say our sweet spot's like four to six. So, that, that is where I would probably want to fall, somewhere on that, as far as shooting. I don't know if we want to talk about selling and shooting, differentiate from that, or if that really makes a big deal. Usually, selling starts before our shooting dates allow, but obviously, there's gonna be people that don't follow that. And it's, I don't think that's something that people are gonna get thrown in jail for or something like that, but it, it does occur. So, the, the selling date also plays into when it's available to people. But yeah, I, I would say shooting, four to six days would, would be the window to be in. I like, because a lot of people like to stock up on the fifth, because there's sales, and you can, you know, save it for that. I don't know that we need to have the fifth as a shooting day, but it certainly can be a purchasing day. Just looking at the calendar here, the fourth lands on a Friday this, this upcoming year. You know, so, it, it shouldn't be too, the calendar is much more favorable this upcoming year, so.
And so, the goal is to try to do a weekend, explain all that, like you say, the number of days, and then trying to get a weekend, and what, how would that look?
Yeah, don't, don't quote me on this perfectly, but the, they wanted to make sure that a Friday and Saturday night were always included in the window of when you could shoot, because that's typically when people don't have to go to work the next day. So, they wanted everybody to be able to do that. And then also, the fourth and fifth were, the fourth is a holiday and the fifth for that day after, basically.
Like, say if the fourth is on Wednesday, you know, Wednesday, Thursday, Friday, Saturday, or Sunday, you know, would be five days to include, you know.
Because I think we, like.
Or the weekend before, and then.
So, like, the fourth and fifth were, were a Thursday, Friday this year, I think, and then we started like the Friday before, which is where we got our eight days. Because it gave that full weekend, and it just happened that the fourth and fifth landed on, just, just so that it equated out that way.
So, this year, if it's on, or two thousand twenty-five, it's, if it's on a Friday, so then it would, it would happen again, right?
Actually, you're right, because the fifth and sixth would be Saturday, Sunday. Right, the fifth and sixth would be.
Well, I don't know what the thought is. That's what I'm trying to figure out.
So, looking at the calendar for next year, the fourth is on a Friday, the fifth is on a Saturday, which I would consider the two primary nights lining up. You want Friday night and Saturday night, and it also happens to be the fourth and the fifth. So, like, we could set it, if we wanted to go as short as four, you could set shooting days from two to five, and that'd be your four days for next year. You're getting almost a full weekend, not counting the Sunday, because that would be the sixth. And I don't think we would consider going over to the sixth, so.
Yeah, yeah, if you did four days, it'd be second, third, fourth, and fifth.
And obviously.
Five days, first, second, third, fourth, fifth.
That philosophy was not a policy. That philosophy was not a policy or an ordinance or something. We, you know, we look at the calendar every year and decide when it's gonna be okay. Um, so, um, we, we're always gonna have that ability to, to be flexible with it. Um, and my, I'm, I'm a person who loves to shoot fireworks. Um, and I, my wife is in bed at eight o'clock every night and wakes up at five in the morning and. We have a, you know, got dogs too that don't enjoy fireworks. We got a new puppy this year. Um, so the, the negatives hit me as well, um, personally, um, but.
Yeah, and I, and I have a dog as well and, and, um, you know, we get up early and all that stuff as well, but the kids still enjoy it. I still enjoy it. Um, so yeah, I, I can see both sides of it though, for sure.
So I have a question. How does enforcement work here? I'm sorry, chief, I, I'm kinda looking at you, but I didn't address you. I'm sorry. I'm just trying to figure out, so like if. If the day after, the day bef- I mean, how, what does that work if you're patrolling and somebody catch, yeah, I mean, I don't know yet how any of that works.
So enforcement is primarily by uh reactive, so they respond to uh calls for service. After hours uh or days where it's no longer legal, then it could be proactive if they um come upon it. They would um could do to a couple of things, warn, tell them to stop. Um, and hopefully they do that, or they could cite them um and have them come to municipal court, pay a fine. Um, and then they would recover the fireworks that have not been spent.
I would imagine or hope and trust most of our PD to, you know, it probably be the kinda situation of. Please don't make me have to come back here.
Yeah.
You know, a- and that will probably handle most of those types of situations.
And I think most people, if they're asked, the officer comes to your house and says, hey, you're not supposed to be doing that, you need to stop. I would assume that most people would listen and would not do it again.
Well, if we come back a second time, they won't be able to.
Yeah, exactly.
Right.
Yeah, I mean fireworks are fun, but it's not worth paying a fine of.
Okay, so right now it's eight and the proposed is three, so. I think eight's excessive.
Agreed.
Well, and eight's not like a set, like the year before wasn't eight. Eight was not like, hey, every year we're doing eight. It just happened eight last year.
Yeah.
Year before, I think it was, I think it was six, but I'm not sure. Five or six.
I would be perfectly fine with us maintaining staying in that four to six window.
Yeah.
And if that, you know, and it, knowing that as a rule of thumb. And then looking at the calendar and trying to select which days you want to be included in that window. Some years it might be four, some years it might be five, some years it might be six.
I mean, I think five is kinda in the middle of those two or sort of in the middle. There's not.
Or, I mean, we could go the more serious route too of, you know, putting some policy in place or something like that. But I, I don't know what everybody's temperature is for that.
Any other opinions? I know the three of us have given our opinion.
So this is just a discussion or are we making a change tonight?
Just a discussion.
Just a discussion.
Okay, so when do we, if we're gonna make a change or propose one, then that has to be back on the agenda?
Yeah.
For a vote and all that, okay.
If we're gonna do something official, yes. If we're gonna maintain going by a, you know, rule of thumb type of thing, then.
Yeah, cause we, we would keep going as we've been doing. Yeah, we don't have anything official on the book.
I, I, I would recommend that uh staff bring something back based on your recommendation this evening. Probably either the last meeting of October or the first meeting in November, um, just so that the vendors will have a. Plenty of time to make adjustments to their orders or, um, cause they'll start looking at that shortly after the first of the year.
And I guess, or if, if we're talking about all of this, are we talking about different sales dates? And different shooting dates or policy for both of, to address both of those things?
I didn't see any, I didn't receive any email about the selling.
Yeah, cause selling can always.
It was just the days.
Selling always can start on the twenty seventh of June.
And we haven't had, I mean, there's definitely people that shoot some off, but it hasn't been a sig-. I don't think, at least I live in the middle of Old Town here and it hasn't been a significant amount to where, like it is, you know. The di- during the fourth and the day before, day after and stuff, those are kinda.
There's certainly a difference between the days where it is legal and the days where they're not. You'll hear them on days when they're not supposed to be shooting them, when they're for sale, but it is pretty far and few between. Now, that's not a hundred percent across the board.
Yeah, and chief had something to add.
Yep.
The cuff, cause I don't have the numbers, but every year we do track them. Um, and I would say on average, we probably have a dozen calls that are outside of the legal timeframe and dates. And no, we have not done any actual enforcement on those. Um, sometimes by the time they get there, you don't see them anymore. They're not lighting them off. Or they just make contact with the people that are in the area, providing them a, a warning.
Do we ban specific kind of fireworks? I mean, like the big loud bangs where like you're sitting down, it scares.
Yeah, we do have an ordinance that um limits what can be legally uh shot off without permits.
Okay, cause I, I just never even looked.
And I believe that all the fireworks stands here in town adhere to that. They don't sell what we can't shoot.
Yeah, well, most of the time they're not, you know.
Yeah, yeah.
People are gonna get in front of a coworker or something.
Anybody else have any, anything to add?
Probably eight days is excessive. It makes Spring Hill, it gives people the chance. Like I know a lot of people come here to watch fireworks or be able to shoot off fireworks throughout the week. Um, and most likely they're buying fireworks here, so, um. I don't know. I kinda enjoy having the opportunity to pick my day and when we can shoot off fireworks. And in my subdivision, it's World War Three on Fourth of July. I mean, it's amazing, but we don't, I don't have a whole lot of people shooting off fireworks late.
Uh, yeah.
Because I think they have all the opportunity to shoot them off early throughout the week, I think, so. Um, probably eight days is excessive, probably so. But um, I also think there's the character of Spring Hill that, just the uh, the environment that makes it kind of fun for people to. To be invited into our community and to purchase their own fireworks here and then shoot them off here. So, um, yeah, probably eight's excessive, uh, but I don't know about, you know, maybe, so we're up probably four to six, like you guys are saying, makes a lot of sense. Um. But I would not wanna see it go to one. I, you know, I think other cities are pe- other cities would ban it all out. You know, I just think that uh. One of the crazy things about Spring Hill that makes a lot of fun is our celebrations, right? Halloween is a lot of fun. Fourth of July is fun too, so I just think those are, um. Those are uh, just kinda what makes us unique in the area. Um, I just don't have like, you know, I had little babies, um, not too long ago. And we would turn the sound machine up, you know, we would, so I, I mean, I get it, I get, you know, there's, i- if it's. It's eleven thirty and I hear a firework, you know, a big boom, I'm, I'm, I'm not pleased with that. I don't encounter that whole lot. I, I just don't remember it happening at all this year. Maybe it did, maybe I'm just oblivious to it. Um, I think by and large, most people are pretty much toeing the line and doing what they're supposed to. Um, and I think the overwhelming pe- majority of people in Spring Hill wanna shoot off fireworks multiple days. So, you know, I, I just.
And that's something I was gonna speak to too, you know, I got a few emails, but that's out of ten thousand people. Same thing with, that's one thing that makes Spring Hill unique is a lot of the big cities around us can't shoot fireworks off. So a lot of those people, a s- a small town, you know, a lot of people grew up in a small town and you're able to shoot fireworks off in most smaller towns. Um, and I think it's one thing, one, one of the big draws. You know, not like you said, Halloween, Christmas, some of those things are a little bit more unique in a small town, uh, so. I'd hate to, hate to do away with that or shorten it, you know, tremendously to where we're not able to all have that freedom to do it.
So my biggest thing is we're having a discussion and one of the things that was noted in here was it had been discussed before and there wasn't follow through. So if you're saying that it's gonna be back on the agenda or whatever, or more information or whatever, I just wanna make sure there's follow through.
We, I don't think we've ever discussed it here, so it must have been long before, long before us. That I'm aware of.
Been discussed.
It seems, yeah, there's been. So I'll keep it on my agenda and I'll keep, repeatedly ask you until I see it again, I guess.
Well, what we would ask from staff is that you give us some direction this evening and then we'll work with Spencer on drafting up a resolution. That will address.
Yeah, we'll, we'll get it in a meeting next, next month.
Yeah, so yeah, I, I think the, so the direction we're giving you, what it sounds like is, you know, draft up a policy. We'll, we'll discuss it again and if we need to a- adjust it or make changes to it, we'll do that.
Sound good?
Yeah.
Do you have any input on it? I know it's your first time up here, but you have, you like fireworks.
No, I do, and I remember growing up in a small town and it was always an exciting thing as a, as a kid to. Do that and to have that opportunity and that's one of the things I love about Spring Hill. Um, my wife works nights, so it's kinda the polar opposite, so she's sleeping when everything's going off usually. But, I mean, it is something we look forward to every year. I think eight is probably excessive. Um, but then again, I don't think a lot of people are shooting them off, or at least in our neighborhood, they're not. Um, prior to, because it, it costs money and they're saving it for the fourth and the fifth and. You know, maybe they're doing their show on the third because of family or something like that.
Mm-hmm.
Um, so, it's kinda.
Sounds good. All right, is that enough for you guys to go off of and then we'll pick somewhere in that four to six range? If that's good with everybody when, when we meet again. All right. Um, the next item on the agenda is a charter ordinance appointments. Um, do we want to push that to the next meeting with Chad being gone? Or do we wanna go ahead and discuss it? I'm good either way.
I spoke to him earlier today when he told me he wasn't coming out. He said he's okay with kinda the proposal we've generally outlined from our last. Uh, meeting, so here's the three things and these are the three things I confirmed with him. He's on board, but so the, the big things here are. What you're gonna see when we bring you a charter ordinance is gonna be very long. Um, part of that is just because there's a handful of current charter ordinances that we're just gonna combine into one place. So it's gonna look like one big, long undertaking and it was a big, long undertaking for your clerk to, to help me out with that. Uh, but it will be one charter ordinance that's in one spot. The meat of that, the driving factor that we're talking about is our vacancies and replacement procedure. So the three kind of things that popped up the last time that I wanna make sure we have some consensus and agreement on of what we want as a city is. Um, all right, so for vacancies, anytime there's a vacancy, we're gonna say. February one was the date that we kinda talked about last time of, February one of an election year is our cutoff date for whether or not a vacancy is filled. Until the next election or for the remainder of the term. Um, so you can say it as within, if you get sworn in in January, if you, a vacancy occurs in the first thirteen months of a term. It is filled until the next regular election. If it comes after that point, we're getting too close to that regular election coming up. For someone to make a decision if they wanna run, declare they wanna run, get the petitions on, all signed and go for it. So that was our cutoff is that February one date. Or does that make sense? I think we can probably push it back to March one if you want it to be a little later and we can move it up to Janu- January one if you want it to be around. But that's sort of the, that was the Goldilocks zone that I was sensing, but this is your chance to tell me I'm wrong and I missed the first step.
I think the February first date is, is fine.
Okay.
I think, you know, if we bumped it to March, that's one extra month, but uh, I think February is a good compromise and also doesn't. Completely push the envelope as far as we can push it, um, to put that out there. Um, well, the February one day also refers to when the vacancy occurs.
Right, so the vacancy.
Appointment occurs.
Correct, so any vacancy that occurs on January thirty first, that's what I did, yeah, okay, I have to do my knuckle trick. January thirty first, um, or prior. You would fill that vacancy until the next regular election.
Yeah, if the vacancy happened on thirty first, that would go on the ballot. If it happened on the first, it would not go on the ballot.
Correct, yes. Um, um, and then again, that same kinda procedure of we'd have a regular election, there'd be an odd number of seats up, but we would just be filling. One, two-year term and three, four-year terms as regular, so, and then that would kinda get it back on track for the next one. Uh, it would be the same procedure generally for mayor. Uh, the only hiccup there is because you only have one mayor, it's gonna, it might kick that out of whack every once in a while. But that's something that, um, it'll probably even itself out over time was the feeling I get. And vacancies in the mayor are probably a little more rare, um, but. Same cutoff February first for the mayor would be the same procedure, so. Um, the other thing is, is defining permanent vacancies for mayor, so this is something that we kinda discussed a little bit. Um, of how long a mayor is absent until we say, okay. Temporary vacancies, one, two, three meetings, your ch- council president's gonna step in and serve as mayor for everything except nominations to fill in. Uh, at a certain point, we as a city need to probably have some procedure of, okay, the mayor's been gone for X number of months. This is a permanent vacancy. We're gonna make the council president the mayor, give them all the abilities, including appointments, so that we can staff all of our uh council spots. Uh, department directors, so I, I, three months seem to be a reasonable time, looking at what other cities do. So three consecutive months or four months in any calendar year, so that kinda gives. Uh, uh, that's two alternatives, so you know, if someone can be out two months, come back two months again, then that's it. But I, it can be longer if you all want. There's sort of a, you know, with two meetings a month, if someone's gone three consecutive months, that's what, six consecutive meetings. Um, that, that's a lot, but.
I think that's a lot. I think that's fair.
Okay.
If you guys didn't see me for three months.
But we can, yeah, we can change that.
Yeah, the only exception I can see to that would potentially be, um. A military deployment.
Mm-hmm.
Um, I, I think that would be one exception we might wanna consider. Um, that if someone gets deployed for a year or longer and their term is, is still going on. And they have the ability to come back and serve again and they want to. Um, I, I think we'd, we would probably want to be able to let that person do that, or most of us would.
And I think that's fair and I think you would give the council president, somehow we'd have to have the wording where they have authority. Because if he's gone for a year, they would probably have to be able to fill, you know, vacancies and do some of the things that they. Council president normally wouldn't be able to do, at least for that year while they're overseas.
Okay.
But I do think I agree with you. If, if somebody was gone serving our country for a year and came back and wanted to still serve as mayor, I think they should still be.
The reason I bring that up is it, it happened at the previous city that I worked at. Um, we had a, it's, they called him alderman. We had an alderman that got deployed and he went and did his deployment for a year and came back and. His wife was appointed while he was gone and then he took the seat back when he came back, so. Um, that, that would really be my only exception, I think, for that three, three consecutive or four. I don't know how you get that language in there or if we just, I, I don't know.
Yeah, I mean, you'd just be a person down. I, I don't know that appointing someone for the one-year term to then come back out. That's a pretty clunky procedure, candidly.
Hmm.
Um, and especially with like boards of aldermen have pretty specific uh statutory guidelines there, so. Yeah, in that case, we can make a carve out of if it's a military deployment, it's not a permanent vacancy, it's still a temporary vacancy. Your council president is temporarily the mayor. The only thing that's gonna happen, yeah, I'll look and see how easy it is to give. Appointment powers in that situation. It's a charter ordinance, so I think we can, but.
It would also.
Need to look at what it looks like to.
It would also be really difficult if we had a staff vacancy that needed to be filled.
Right, right.
That would be the massive problem.
Exactly, yeah. If, if all of a sudden we had one of our directors leave for some reason and, and then we couldn't have pu-. You know, couldn't put somebody in there for a year, that, that'd be a problem.
So, I mean, so maybe it's not wor- worth it, but.
I don't, yeah.
That, that would be an extremely special circumstance, I think, but it, it hits me differently because I've seen it before. I think the chance of that occurring is just so slim.
It's pretty rare.
That, I don't know how Spencer would write that in. I just, I think you need to have a mayor, right? Or you need to have, like, you have to have somebody present to be able to make decisions and move, to progress, right? To be able to keep the ball moving forward. Um, in the case of deployment, obviously, uh, you know. Much respect to that individual for their service, but they can't serve on the count, you know, they're not able to serve here for the city at that, at the level that we need them to.
Yeah.
Um. I think, so, I don't know how Spencer could word that in there if it's even necessary. I, I just think it's such a. Such a uh, a difficult thing. I think we just gotta keep things moving forward at the city council level and, and much respect if somebody had to go serve, I mean. Um, but, yeah, I think, so, those are my thoughts.
I will tell you that's, and, and again, it's your call, so if that's what you wanna do, I will try to find a way to make it work. Um, that is probably one of those situations where, and I talked about this last time of, we don't wanna over legislate in a charter ordinance.
I, I think you're right.
Yeah, we can't assume every possibility that's gonna happen. Yeah, we can't assume every possibility that's gonna happen, you know? Which, and, and, yeah, military service is a very unique exception, so I commend you, I mean, that's a great thought, um, and it has happened in the past, but um, yeah, if it, if we notice it happening multiple times again up in the future, I mean, I think charter ordinances are not written in stone, you can change them, just like you're doing with this, so we can come back to it if we don't like it when it's coming up. But I, yeah, I would recommend starting with the as clean as we can to kind of reset the policy and see how that goes. Because this whole thing we're proposing might blow up in our faces, and in two years, we're gonna change it anyway, so I don't think it will, I'm gonna knock on wood, but, but you know, that's always a possibility.
I'm not going to Florida.
Yeah. Oh, yeah, forty-nine other states, though, so.
Forty-eight.
Any other comments? Otherwise, I will go ahead and work with our clerk to get you all a charter ordinance to consider formally at a meeting in the near future, which will be approved by a two-thirds vote, and then it's published, and it'll go into effect sixty-one days, I believe, af- after that, so. And we will go through that process when we bring it to you, so you know kind of the timeline of when it happens, but, um, alright, we'll get this going, thank y'all.
Sounds good. That ends discussion. At this time, we'll move on to announcements and reports. Don't really have anything other than Fall Festival was a huge success, it was a lot of fun, family, perfect weather, seems like about once every ten years, we have an absolutely perfectly weather, weather weekend like we had, um. So it was awesome, lots of thousands of people came out, my family enjoyed it, prayed was awesome, so yeah, it was a big success. Mr. Van Hem.
I have nothing.
Mr. Peel.
No report.
Mrs. Feedback.
Yeah, I had something, um, I, just a recognition of what today is, it's World Mental Health Day, and, um, it's basically an international day for global mental health education, awareness, and advocacy against social stigma. And, um, of course, mental health is near and dear to my heart, I've been a mental health professional for over twenty-five years now, and, um, yeah, it's just, it was an important day to be recognized, and I just want to take an opportunity to do that, so. That's the only announcement.
Mr. Grant.
I'm nothing.
Mr. Massey.
No report.
Mr. Lau.
No report.
Chief Henson.
I do.
Just wanted to let everybody know that this weekend is, uh, National Faith in Blue Weekend, and we are doing a food drive um, for our local pantry. The donation bins here at City Hall are full, which is great. We still have a somewhat empty box at the PD, so if anybody wants to drop off some canned items there, it is open twenty-four hours. Lobby is open, um, but we are collecting food through the weekend, and then we'll deliver it to the pantry on Monday. And on Thursday, the seventeenth, members of the Police Department and of the faith community will be out at the pantry, helping, um, distribute the donated food, as well as just sharing fellowship with those in line.
Awesome. Mr. Burton. Mrs. Abel.
No report.
Madam Clerk. Mrs. Dunn.
No report.
Mrs. Jones. Mr. Spear.
No report.
Wow. That's almost a record, almost. Except for chief. Uh, with that, I entertain, oh, no, we got executive session, sorry, I'm, I almost adjourned this before. Uh, with that, I entertain a motion to move into executive session. And whoever wants to tackle that motion. Ten minutes?
Ten minutes.
Maybe a couple minutes for me to sign up over there, so.
So, fifteen to ten.
Ten, but maybe give like a five-minute bathroom break. How about, how about ten minutes and a five-minute bathroom break?
There we go.
So I'm, I moved the city council recess into executive session for twelve minutes to receive advice of counsel. To discuss imminent domains pursuant to KSA seven-five dash four-three-one-nine B two of the Kansas Open Meetings Act, the open meeting will resume in the city council chambers at, um, what, eight-twenty? No formal action is anticipated following the session. Persons to be in attendance are the following: Lane Massey, city administrators, Spencer Lau, city attorney, and Jacob Spear, public work director.
And Allison Abel, city admin.
And Allison Abel, city engineer.
Yep.
And Allison Abel, city engineer.
Second. Got a motion second, is there any further discussion? Not all those in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries four-zero-zero, we will see you guys shortly.